Good evening. Welcome to the February 11th, 2019, meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please. Commissioner Jim Everwater will lead us in our pledge. Jim.
Good afternoon, gentlemen and ladies. Thank you for the pleasure. We will enjoy all the opportunities that we get every day. We ask you to watch over and protect us and our families. We ask you to look after those in our country that are serving overseas to protect us and watch over our first responders and families of those that are serving overseas. We ask you to give us guidance tonight and revision and lively debate when it comes to your name and your right.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hold the roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P., Chip Pinion, Craig Lynch, David Jones, Jim Everwater, Lee Bogle, Mike Kush, Mike Vaught, Pettis Reed, Rhonda Allen, Jeff Phillips.
Present.
You have a call.
Thank you, Gail. We have no minutes to read tonight. And we have no items that have been withdrawn or deferred, so getting right into it. Item six, new business, 6A submitted for final plat approval, 6A1. Item 18-2002, re-subdivision of Lot 1, Underwood subdivision, reapproval. Two lots on 2.87 acres, zoned RM located off of Prim Lane, Howard, Stephen Prim, and Diana Prim are the applicants. This plat includes a waiver request for a lot of less than five acres on a private easement. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This particular subdivision plat was actually granted a waiver for the less than five acres along a private easement at the Planning Commission's November 13th meeting. The planning, I'm sorry, the plat's a result of that waiver request. You'll see on the plat that there is an access easement that's actually heading through Lot 2, down to Lot 1, back to Prim Lane in that area. This plat was approved by the Planning Commission back in January of last year, 2018, but the approval has expired as they only are good for six months unless they're recorded. Since that time, I know the applicant's gone through a lot of different iterations of things that might work on this property as far as providing water and different things. We think she's finally come to a solution on that. All that being said, I will say also that as part of this approval, there should be a fire hydrant waiver in there as well. The line that's along West Prim can't support a hydrant, so I think that was brought up at the January 2018 meeting as a matter of fact, but it just didn't get on the plat. But again, this is just reapproval. This was approved back January last year, so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff?
May I motion to approve this?
We have a motion and a second to approve 18-2002, re-subdivision of Lot 1, Underwood subdivision. This is a reapproval. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6A2, 18-2050, Mary Beth Meadows. This is reapproval. Six lots on 11.03 acres, zoned RM located off Leanna Swamp Road. Brad Smotherman is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The preliminary plan originally for this development was approved by the Planning Commission back in June of 2017. You might recall there was a actual road going to be constructed and several more lots were shown than what is being currently shown on the subdivision plat before you. Drainage issues prevented the applicant from pursuing that plan, so the applicant changed his design to provide a total of six lots on the property. You can see each one's got its own road frontage, but they do intend to use a private drive for a majority of the lots. Lot 1 will have its own access kind of up there, I guess that's on the west side of the property. This plat was approved by the Planning Commission back in July of last year, but again, has expired. Six months would have been last month, so the applicant's just seeking reapproval of the plat. Nothing really has changed on this, so they're just looking for reapproval of this. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? We have a motion and a second to approve 18-2050, Mary Beth Meadows. This is a reapproval. Any other questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6A3, 18-2054, Timber Ridge, Section 4, five lots on 8.68 acres, zoned RL located off New Zion and Midland Road. David Mitchell is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The applicant, as you can see on the plat on the screen, is proposing to subdivide the subject property into five different lots. All lots are an acre or larger, which meets the zoning requirements. This plat was approved by the Planning Commission back in May of last year, but again, as the other two we talked about tonight, that six-month timeframe has expired, so they're just asking for reapproval of the plat for that reason. I'm going to turn it over to Mike. He has a comment or two he'd like to make on this.
The plat is in good order. I just wanted to make mention of driveway culvert that they're calling out for, I guess, Lot 78, which is, it does have an access to New Zion Road over here, but they're sharing a driveway and crossing this major conveyance right here. They are calling for, if I can see, note number 17, seven 48-inch culverts. So that'll be a substantial water crossing there. I've asked the surveyor if is there any way they could get access for this parcel, and he said that's the way they want to do it. So just making y'all aware, that's going to be a substantial crossing right there. And other than that, it's all in good order.
That recommendation, approval. Or reapproval, I guess I should say.
My question, approved, subject to staff. We include the District Attorney's office, staff.
Motion and a second. Have a motion and a second for 18-2054, Timber Ridge, Section 4. This is a reapproval. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6B zoning, rezoning requests that are scheduled for public hearings. 6B1, 19-A001, James E. McCormick, location 2328 and 2348, New Salem Highway, which is Highway 99. Commission District is 7. County Commissioner is Mike Kush. Size of the site is approximately 2.4 acres. Tax map is 114. Existing zoning is residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CS for commercial services. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, the applicant is requesting to rezone the subject properties to commercial services. Property immediately adjacent to the subject property, you can see on the map here, Mike's got up, he'll turn on the zoning here in just a second. You'll see those two kind of pinkish ones in the center of the screen. Those two were rezoned by the Board of Commissioners back in January of last month at the Board of Commissioners meeting. According to applications, information provided by the applicant, the owners would like to facilitate neighborhood-supporting retail by repurposing the existing structures or by developing new attractive retail. Their intent is to enhance the neighborhood by offering low-impact services while being extremely sensitive to the quality of life of nearby residents. Some examples of services that they included in their agenda packets were things like hair salons, dental offices, nail salons, work-up facilities, et cetera. Excluded would be anything what they claim to be deemed detrimental to the neighborhood such as liquor stores, tobacco stores, or any use that could be considered a nuisance to nearby residential. Concept plans were submitted and are included with your agenda packets, although it appears to be the same design for both lots. The applicant states in his comments that he would like to prohibit those uses that we talked about just a moment ago. Just for a word of information, I know the Planning Commission's aware of this, but those who may be in the audience or those watching from home, any use, even the uses he's saying are detrimental to neighborhoods such as liquor stores, tobacco stores, or whatnot, those uses are classified as general retail trade, which are allowed by right in the CS zone. So neither staff nor the Planning Commission could deny a site plan based on the use if one were submitted. So that would have to be some sort of a private property restriction or something like that that the applicant would have to do voluntarily. We could not make him do that, nor could we require that with the zoning, a rezoning of the property. I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. Some other things about the concept plans, it doesn't appear that any land's being set aside for septic soils on either one, which would be required if they weren't using sanitary sewer, and that the setbacks that they're, the setbacks that they're applying are not accurate as well. The properties do have access to New Salem Road, Highway 99. T.D.O. approval would be required for any newer modified access drives. If this were to be approved upon development of these properties, we would anticipate or want to recommend some sort of shared access between the two properties, or maybe if all of them developed at one time, maybe some sort of shared access. That way, there's not as many access points for commercial development along Highway 99 in that area. Of course, Highway 99, you know, in this area is under construction right now to a five-lane cross-section. They would be required to install a type 2 buffer adjacent to residentially-zoned properties. That would be confirmed at a site plan stage, submittal, if it were to get to that point, and performance standards would also apply. I want to call out a email that I received today that I laid out on your table from a resident in the area, Mr. Scott Sharber. I'm not going to read this, but basically, he's got several concerns that he wanted the board to be aware of. I believe there's, I believe his applicant's wife is here as well, they might make some comments and furtherance of this, but I wanted to call this, call your attention to that as well. I will say that the requested rezoning is consistent with the recommendations made by the comprehensive plan, our plan, and commercial zoning is located directly across the street within the city limits of Murphysboro and immediately adjacent to the subject properties due to those properties that were rezoned by the County Commission last month. Being that Highway 99 is being widened to five lanes in this area, we would anticipate over time that this area would commercialize. All that being said, although the zoning request is consistent with the recommendations of our plan, similar to when we considered the other two, I believe there are some timing issues that need to be at least considered. It might be more appropriate to consider this when these improvements are closer to being done than they are right now, and when the applicant has a chance to better clarify their intentions, or if annexation to the city of Murphysboro is to be pursued. I would also prefer that, honestly, I would have preferred all of these come in at one time with, under one zoning request rather than in piecemeal as we're seeing them. And I've made that very clear to the applicants. It is what it is. There's not a whole lot I can do about it, but I just wanted to at least make that, make that known. For that reason, I am neutral on this request. I can see, and we've got commercial zoning right there at Caseon Lane, directly across the street, a five-lane road. I mean, I think it's only a matter of time before they develop commercially, but I don't like the idea of each one kind of developing separately, or if they're not going to tie into sewer, or how that's all going to work. There's just a little bit of unknown as far as I'm concerned, but anyway, I just throw that out there for your consideration if nothing else. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for staff at this time? If not, I'll declare the public hearing open for item 19-A001, James E. McCormick. Is the applicant available? Would you please come forward? Give us a brief description of what you want to do. Give us a brief description of your plan and what you want to do.
Doug has covered that area pretty good with his description of what's taking place there, and of course, the growth out there, as everyone knows, is heavily in residential and commercial, and the more residential we have, the more business opportunities there's going to be and to enhance the community out there. These two pieces of property, along with what y'all approved last month, about five acres total, so there's a couple of different things that's been looked at already on this property. Nothing is firm and nothing is in writing at the moment. We did have a contract pending on part of this property. That's not going to happen at the present due to some technicalities. But anyway, this property with five acres has a lot of different applications it could be used for. We've had some interest in veterinarian, has had some interest in it for one, and a couple of others that looking at it for maybe a strip mall. So there's two, three interests that we've got going with this property right there. There's only three lots between this property and CVS Drugstore down there at Caseon Lane, so these two are zoned CS. Then there's only three lots from Stone Brook all the way to Caseon Lane that will be left as residential. So we appreciate the consideration on these properties. We'd like to get it rezoned, as Doug says, it's, this property, as everyone probably knows, not just this, but others, it's pretty heavy commercial out there, and the more residential we get, the more services we're going to have to have, so we appreciate your consideration.
Any questions for Mr. McCormick? Hold on a second. Any questions? Evening. If you would state your name and address.
My name is Ursula Harrison. I live at 2465 Foxcroft Road. We live just one block over from 99. First of all, question, well, two questions that probably should go to staff. Number one, the notice sent out on this indicated that this was being rezoned as commercial services, I should be, commercial neighborhood, and all of the staff work seems to be around commercial services. And I'm just wondering why that is and what the difference is in that zoning seems to be significant.
And I can answer that question very quickly, and I appreciate you bringing that up. The notices went out for the rezoning, golly, a few weeks ago, and in the interim time, I had discussions with the applicant and the neighbor about why they were asking for commercial neighborhood as opposed to commercial services, as commercial services was already applied for and granted for the two lots. After discussing it with them, they said, well, let's go ahead and we'll ask for commercial services. The Planning Commission always asks for a commercial neighborhood, so yeah, that's why that happened. Now, the differences between them, commercial neighborhood's a little more restrictive. The biggest restriction is in general retail. Retail uses, like some of the uses we were discussing earlier, can only be up to 5,000 square feet, whereas commercial services, that prohibition is not there. There's a few other things, but that's one of the primary differences between them. But that was the reason that it happened, so appreciate you asking that.
Yeah, the other question was that, my understanding is that in the event that Mr. McCormick cannot get a veterinarian in there, that he could put a liquor store in there next to Mr. Sharber's house, is that correct?
The zoning would allow it. If there are distance requirements, you know, outside of what's enforced in the zoning, he would have to take care of that as well. But yes, I mean, tobacco, liquor stores, things like that, that was kind of what I was alluding to a little earlier in my comments regarding the fact that if this were to be approved, even if they didn't want to do a liquor store, if somebody were to come in, if they were to sell the property, and someone comes in with a liquor store, we can't tell them no. So, but again, any distance requirements that would be enforced by like the Beer Board or something like that, they'd still have to adhere to those. Those are just aren't zoning requirements.
Well, thank you for that response. My other comments basically are related to, in opposition of approving this at this time. It appears that this is the first step to annexing this area into the city, and it's very unlikely that you're going to get approval for more than one access to Highway 99 for this property. As the staff has said, it'd be much more appropriate to consider this as a complete development rather than piecemealing this into the, into the county as commercial. You've also got a situation there that evidently applicant, according to the concept plans submitted, has not thought about buffers for adjoining residential property, also has not considered a septic system. And as long as this is in the county, I believe it will have to have a septic system. So from that standpoint, I would say that this is probably a premature consideration of rezoning this as commercial. I would strongly urge Mr. McCormick to go back and put together a plan that would use all of this property to the best usage and be much better for the, for the neighborhood as well as for his own plans of development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request?
My name is Sharon Sharber. I live at 2358 New Salem. I'm right next door to the property. And my concerns are, again, like Mr. Harrison's, is that there doesn't seem to be a lot of planning as the buffers between that property and our property. I bought this property because it was a residential area. I plan on living in it as a residential area, and I do not want a liquor store, or a car salesman, or somebody dumping all kinds of stuff into our property onto the land, because, you know, commercial properties, a lot of time, they just dump everything into the water supply. And there's a, there's a creek right across the road. We have a working well on our property, and I'm concerned and opposed to this being commercial property because of that.
Thank you, Ms. Sharber. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
Doug, question. Have pieces of property like this with different owners since they're current residential? How do you, how do you meet, not that it's a requirement, how do you make your suggestion that you wait until you can bundle all these properties together? I mean, when you have a bunch of different owners and different developers seeking different parcels, how do you get to the point where you can bundle something like this?
It's, I mean, quite frankly, Mr. Kush, it's not something that's, it's more of a preference, I would say, that I would like to see. You may, I mean, you make a good point when you talk about all the different property owners up and down through there, and some have different timeframes than others and different things, so it's difficult to maybe come to some kind of a consensus. I guess, I think in a perfect world...
Perfect world, somebody would, a developer would come in and buy the whole...
Right, sweep in, swoop in, grab them all, and do it all at one time. I guess what, what I'm trying to avoid is every lot has its own access. When they're planned at different times, it's harder to coordinate things like shared access points and different things like that, as the speakers were saying, the landscaping, the buffering, and different things. That can be challenging. There's not a magic bullet to it, I will say that, but I just think from a preference standpoint, I guess my idea, when I thought of the timing aspect, especially with the other two properties we talked about a couple of months ago, considering that one of them is being used as a staging area, I mean, nothing's going to happen with that property until they're done with the road improvement anyway, so it's going to be a couple of years. And it would end up, will probably end up happening with these, you know, even if they're originally, if they're eventually sold, they're going to be sold to somebody who may not want to develop with septic, and they're going to go into the city and ask for the sanitary sewer, so it's all going to be out of our hands anyway. But they'll have a commercial entitlement at that point to go into the city with as opposed to just a residential one. So I think that's part of the motivation here as to, you know, ultimately what, what's going to happen. But I don't think there is an easy way to do that. I think it's, like I said, really more if it's in a perfect world kind of situation.
Mr. Chairman? The question I have is somewhat like Mr. Kush right there. Across the road in front of it, that's commercial, directly in front of it, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And we've already allowed property owners beside it to have commercial. We've allowed them, we've said yes to them. You know, you get to the point of, say, well, you can't, and I understand that, you know, it's, it's a difficult, I know what you want, and I know what we would all want, and in a perfect world, yes, I could understand that too. But what you're seeing down 99 right there, there's no such thing as anything perfect. I travel that every day just about and see what's happening there, and I just, I just don't see how, I can't see how you say no to one and yes to another. I mean, that's the problem there.
Right, and you make a good point, Mr. E., when you talk about it. In a sense, the horse has already left the barn when it comes to those other two properties. So, I mean, and I wasn't making a negative recommendation. Mine was more neutral, as it was for the first two properties. It was more of a neutral thing, just trying to lay it all out there and say, hey, you know, I can see both sides of this, maybe it's better to wait for now. But since that decision's been made to, you know, let the other two go, I mean, these are the next two in line, and like you said, I mean, when you look at the zoning of the property, you've got commercial services in the county on one side, and you've got those residential parcels, then that larger tract next to, but next to the, the CVS, you've got Office General, which is a office commercial-type zoning, then you have Commercial Fringe, across the street's Commercial Fringe, Commercial Highway, which is more akin to our Commercial General, and then some Commercial Fringe, which is more along the lines of our commercial services. So like I say, I mean, it meets the intent of the comprehensive plan, it's just there's two sides to it. That's why they pay you the big bucks.
Doug, which protects the residential neighbors better, commercial neighborhood or commercial services as far as buffer zones and...
Buffers are the same. There's no difference.
Essentially the same.
Yeah. Commercial neighborhood, again, just has a little bit more, a little bit more restrictions on retail and some of the uses that are allowed. I mean, that might be a compromise here, maybe rather than go commercial services, let them have commercial neighborhood. It's what he asked for to begin with. Just give him what, you know, if you wanted, if you felt inclined to do something, just give him what he asked for and, you know, see where that goes from there. But the reason I asked him to begin with was just because commercial services was already applied for and granted on the properties next door. I just wasn't sure why he had done that. And then by the time that conversation had come up, those notices in the mail had already gone out, so that was, that was why that happened.
I want to ask Mike and Pettis, because Mike represents, Pettis is by there and represents an area past that. Either one of y'all, either way?
So just to go back on that buffer point, regardless of what commercial zoning you would have, you would have some zoning or buffering requirement behind the lot, commercial lots, to separate the folks on Fox Ridge, Foxcroft, that they would be protected as well as any side buffer that if there was a remaining residential between there and CVS?
That is correct. Regardless of which zone it is, it's still going to be a type 2 buffer. That doesn't change.
Doug, New Salem right there, refresh my memory, is it going to five lanes?
Five lanes, yes, sir.
A middle turn lane and...
Center turn lane, yes, sir.
I have a question. Doug, for the benefit of the neighbors, can you talk a little bit about after rezoning happens, what happens with site plans? And we do see plans for buffering, and there are ways to address water quality concerns and...
Yes.
Things like that, because generally, this body knows I'm typically not ever a favor of speculative rezoning, but if there was ever a case to say, you know, this property's almost entirely surrounded by commercial property, so it's hard to make the case that this won't... this one at some point go commercial. The, the commercial services that you recommended, you said that's more compatible even with the city zoning, the Commercial Fringe that they have, so...
I said it's similar.
But probably more so similar than a commercial neighborhood. So again, if we're looking for consistency, the CS would be the one. Well, if you would just help answer for them some of those concerns, I'd like for you to talk about that a little bit.
Yes. If this were to be approved, of course, today's just a recommendation by the planning commission. This has to go in front of the Board of Commissioners at next month's meeting, which I believe is March the 14th. Assuming it were to get, again, for the sake of argument, assuming it gets approved tonight and then gets approved at the Board of Commissioners meeting in March, the next step would then be if they found a developer that wanted to develop the properties, they would contract for sale the property. And then the, whoever buying the property would do, an engineer, would contract with a design engineer to do an engineered site plan. That would be like with a local engineering firm or a firm that they're familiar with and whatnot. They would show where the building's going to be located, where parking is going to be located, like you said, where drainage, landscaping, all those things are going to be on the site. And all that would be submitted to staff for our review. And as long as the buildings were over 3,000 square feet, which most of the time when you're talking about new residential, new commercial buildings like this, they are going to be, that comes before the planning commission for their approval as well. They'll look at it as far as the, you know, are there any, we look at it from a standpoint of does it meet the criteria that is in the zoning ordinance in our subdivision regulations and whatnot. And then we present it to the planning commission, like Ms. Allen said, yeah, we see this again. This isn't the only time that this, it's not like it's going to, if this were to be approved tonight, tomorrow you're going to have bulldozers coming out there and starting construction. There's a lot more to it than that. So, but we look at all those things as far as detention of stormwater, and Mike can talk more to that if you've got specific questions. The landscape buffer, the width, the material, the trees, if there's going to be fencing or not. We look, septic, signage, yes, we look at all those, those various items, parking requirements and whatnot.
I have to agree with all of the points with the surrounding commercial. And I certainly understand the concerns of the neighbors. I think if you'll recall, at our last meeting when we approved the corner lot, we were very surprised that none of the neighbors showed up for that, and it did make it pass much easier. I'm glad to hear that we're attracting some interest. So I'm going to throw this out kind of for discussion and consideration. I don't even know if it's possible. Of course, we've got the buffering situation and the environmental situations. Our regulations can take care of those. If we were to, this would be my proposal, one of two things. If we were to rezone these individual lots, two individual lots, commercial neighborhood, that would allow a less intensive use of two small pieces of property. Or if they were combined into one property, we could consider rezoning it as commercial services. I mind, that would make it more palatable for a lot of reasons. Now here again, I don't know if it's possible, but I want to throw that out there.
Personally, I mean, I think it's either one or the other. I don't think you can say, well, if you combine them, we'll give you commercial services. If you don't, we'll give you commercial neighborhood. I just say pick one. Personally, like I said, commercial neighborhood is what they asked for originally. I'd probably be at least more comfortable with that. And if there's a contract that is made and the new owners want to try and come and change the zoning, I think we let them do that on their own at that point. Whether or not they want to combine the properties or not, I think we just leave that up to them. Like I said, the differences between the zones, there are some, but the biggest difference, especially with the uses that the applicant's talking about, really has more to do with the size of the general retail. You know, it's limited at 5,000 square feet for commercial neighborhood where it's not for commercial services. But that's, that'd be my, I don't think you can condition it that way. I think you just need to go one way or the other.
So we are looking at these, and thank you, Jim, we are looking at these as two separate properties, not combining them into one property.
Right, I mean, you're looking at them as one application. I mean, they're two separate properties. We're not combining in the sense of, you know, property lines or anything. It's one application with two properties on it.
That does not stop a developer from buying both properties and putting one commercial building on both properties.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Right. That'd do for subdivision plat, but other than that...
So, and what you're, what you're saying is if we, if we granted commercial neighborhood on these, let's say a developer sniffed out that he wanted to purchase these two properties plus Mrs. Waite's property we approved last month, even though hers is commercial services, they could come back and request a rezoning to make it all...
If they wanted to, yes, they could do that.
So again, do we just keep it all commercial services and stay consistent? Or do we just pigeonhole these two properties as commercial neighborhood? I mean, is it worth, is it worth it? I don't, I don't know what we gain by, by just keeping it in all commercial services. Thoughts on really what would be the benefit of not just staying consistent along the street with commercial services? I'm open, I'm open for...
As any neighbor would be concerned, but I think the boat sailed. I mean, we've already done commercial services. I think consistency, we should always be consistent with our decisions. And with commercial all around and commercial services right beside it, I think that question should have been asked with the first zoning.
I'm ready for a motion if you are, Mr. Commissioner. All right, thank you. Knowing the lay of the land out there and knowing that this is a heavily developed area from a multifamily growth, which as the applicant said, is putting demands on new commercial development. And as you can see, the strip there on 99, nearly all that is already zoned. I'm going to make a motion that we approve the applicant's request to zone commercial services on those two properties and base that on any other staff comments.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 19-A001, James E. McCormick, for commercial services. Other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. No old business and understaffed reports. I think you have on your desk, Tanya, if I'm not mistaken, a report that maybe Commissioner Allen requested a month or so ago. I'm not sure if you've got that on your desk or not, but Tanya, you want to add a little comment to it?
Very briefly, Commissioner Allen, this was the numbers that you asked for at the last commission meeting. You had asked for a total of the single-family dwelling permits that were issued within Rutherford County. So I'd separated them out to each of the municipalities and then again into dwelling units, apartments and mobile homes. And so the total permits issued in Rutherford County in 2018 was 4,072. No, permits weren't issued, no, not in 2018. No, we just had development tax paid, so they are getting ready to do a 384 unit on Sterling Road, Sterling Drive. Does that sound familiar? They just paid the development tax, so that's coming, but not in 2018, they didn't.
Look at those totals and kind of see the direction that we're going as opposed to where we've been in the past. Anything else, Tanya? Anything else? Okay. Doug, you have anything?
Just real quick, on your desk as well, you saw reports that the staff prepared regarding some zoning regulations that are in the zoning ordinance regarding mining, drilling and quarrying. This is for your information tonight. I anticipate us talking about this in the near future, but just wanted you to take that with you tonight. And if you've got questions, let me know and we'll, we'll discuss that at further time.
Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, the 25th of February. It'll be a 9:00 AM meeting in the Planning Mass, and that meeting will follow a 7:30 training session that we have scheduled for that morning. So 7:30 training, 9:00 AM scheduled Planning Commission meeting on the 25th. Anyone have anything? Want to thank the public for their attendance and their participation. It is meaningful for this commission and for the county as a whole. And I hope that that process continues to be educational and fruitful for all of us. With that, thank you for your participation and your attendance tonight. We are adjourned.